Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July 8th. If you're watching live on Monday, July 8th, feel free to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting is in two weeks, Monday, July 22nd, work session at 7:00 and our regular televised meeting at 8:00. Apologies for starting a little bit late tonight. We were engaged in conversation with Matt Traynor, our new Superintendent Parks and Rec, and have suspended that conversation to get our regular meeting in and then are keeping him waiting to come back. So, thank you for that patience, Matt. A few announcements to make. Today is Monday, July 8th. This coming Saturday, Saturday, July 13th is the 15th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. A great lineup, exciting day, quite a few pre-sale tickets already sold. Really, really hope folks will come out and join this uniquely Pleasantville event. You can find all about it at PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. We very, 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 very strongly encourage you to buy tickets online in advance, or if you prefer to avoid the online fees, you can do it in person at the Village Rec Center. But having a ticket in advance means you'll go directly to the wristband station and you will not have to wait in any line. So that helps you guys, that helps us. We're really expecting an exciting day. Again, the entire lineup, the schedule, the food vendors, craft vendors, bands involved, the Captain Lawrence Beer and Wine Garden, all the details are available at PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com as well as a couple of rules of the road. Worth taking a look, but it's going to be a great day and we very much hope you sign up. Last couple of meetings, we've reported about the unhappy circumstance with leak springing around the kiddie pool and am really happy to announce what probably most families with young kids already know, and that is, we're back in business. Thank you, Matt Traynor, for hard work in an unhappy circumstance. The last group you want to disappoint as the weather gets hot is a bunch of toddlers. So, thank you, Matt, for all of that. I know your team worked hard and thank you, Eric and Noreen. Tough situation involving digging up and replacing pipes and putting it all back together and grounding the sidewalk. So, at any rate, the pool is up and running. The big pool was always up and running, but we're full swing. The weather's turned hot, so if you haven't already joined, get yourself to the Pleasantville Rec Center or take a look online at Pleasantville-NY.gov and sign up. Really, a good season shaping up. Today, I participated, as did many, many local elected officials in Westchester, at a press conference that was held by the County Executive, George Latimer, announcing what had already been announced in the press, which is that the county's effort to get the state legislature and ultimately the governor to approve a sales tax increase in Westchester County of an additional 1 percent, that is, 1 cent on the dollar, was approved in Albany, signed by the governor and is taking effect in August. The result of that is that 70 percent of the money generated will go to the county to support its general needs, 20 percent distributed in the towns and villages that are the recipients of shared sales tax already, and then 10 percent of the money distributed to the school districts in Westchester County. So, happy news from a budgetary standpoint. The county's preliminary estimates indicate that for the partial year when this takes effect, that ends December 31 of this year, the Village of Pleasantville may see projected $170,000 odd thousand dollars in additional revenue. And for the full calendar year 2020, projected potentially as much as $373,000 in annual revenue. So, that obviously is a big help for a community on the scale of Pleasantville. And the other happy news about this is that part of the reason the county encouraged this increase was that it allows the county right away to put $5 million back into the fund balance, which had gotten perilously low at the county level. Next year, $10 million back. County Executive Latimer has committed to presenting a budget to legislators that would keep the tax levy flat on the county side for the next two years. And unlike the circumstance in some counties elsewhere in the state, the plan, as reported already, also shares some of the money with our community. So, fair to say, nobody is thrilled about the idea of a tax increase, but for a lot of reasons that are, I think, spelled out with great care by the county executive, this is probably the best solution to help stabilize the county's finances and also provide some benefit to all of us. So, lastly, I would say it's certainly a benefit to everybody to have the county we live in be in stable financial circumstances. And I think it's a pleasing result to think that the money generated here in Westchester County stays in Westchester County and we all benefit from the thriving economy that we all work so hard to build. So, unlike money that gets taxed from us off to Albany and we can then seek to get it back on bended knee, this is money generated in Westchester by the Westchester economy and redistributed to Westchester community. So, on balance, I think a happy report. And if you're interested in more, I'm sure that the sales tax press conference will be up on the web. You can go to the westchestergov.com site and take a look at the details there. I want to congratulate former Pleasantville Mayor and County Attorney John Nona, Pleasantville resident, who has been appointed to a nine-member commission in Albany to study over the next six months the possibilities for public financing of campaigns. So, there were several appointments made by various different groups, including the governor and the leadership and the assembly and the legislature. John, who has been a prominent lawyer and is now the county attorney and also has been a pro bono lawyer on election issues, has been anointed in that role as a member of that nine-member commission. That is both happy news and a well-deserved honor for John, and we look forward to hearing from him about how that commission plays out. Those of you who follow the Westchester magazine, Best of Westchester, I can report that Pleasantville has always shown its qualities in the votes for Best of Westchester. This year, I think Pleasantville kind of outdid itself, and in no particular order. If you get yourself that magazine, you will find that listed in Best of Westchester in Pleasantville are Mission Taqueria, Wood and Fire, Falafel Taco, The Farm Market, Plyables, Pub Street, Southern Table, Immortal Fitness, Infinity Browse, The Village Bookstore, Be Candylicious, The Zwilling Cooking Studio, Lucy's Lounge, Burns Film Center, The Gordons Parks Foundation, Breaking Ground Dance Center, Chad Kraus Photography, and in the category of not-quite-impleasanville, but we think of it as Pleasantville, the Rockefeller State Park, and also our friends, the Captain Lawrence Brewery, born in Pleasantville, moved to Elmsford. So, that's a pretty long list in Best of Westchester for a community our size. I think it falls into the category that we have been in in several other moments in our lives where this little place delivers value well above its weight class. So, pretty exciting news. Congratulations to every one of those element folks on the list. Remind you, as usual, to go to PleasantvilleRecycles.org, take a look at all the information and services they provide there. A shout-out to the recycling committee, which will be in force at the music festival this coming Saturday, seeking to bring us as close as possible to a zero-waste festival, as they have always been in the past. A really impressive turnout by a bunch of great folks, and that's a good segue. Who would be the best reporter on our planned food scrap composting program? Take it away.
Sure.
Coming up soon.
So, coming up soon, exciting news. So, one of the new initiatives brought to us by Pleasantville Recycles will be a food scrapping program. That is a municipal compost, essentially, that we're expecting to roll out in October, but there will be education going on throughout the summer, I believe, at the farmer's market and other locations for those who are interested in learning more. We are following a model that was initiated by Scarsdale and so has been heavily researched in terms of the nuts and bolts of how it works. It will be fairly straightforward. Individuals or families who want to participate will buy a little bucket that goes on your kitchen tabletop and then a larger one that the compostable bags in which you put your food scraps go into. And one of the things that's very exciting about it, from my perspective, as somebody who composes at home, is that you can compost many more things when you're participating in a municipal program. So, not only fruit and vegetable scraps, but meat, dairy, basically any kind of leftover food. And so...
Paper towels and things too, right?
Paper towels and things like that too. And so, and it also dovetails, as somebody who's connected to both groups, with the effort of the Climate Smart Group in the sense that this is yet another thing we can do to reduce our carbon footprint. So, yes, happening most likely in October and you will be hearing about more about it. And you can also contact Pleasantville Recycles if you'd like to know more earlier.
So, good news on that front, and you'll see, if you hang around for our resolutions, which we're about to do, a shout-out to the folks at Henkles. We have a revised amended license agreement with Henkles that allows us to use parts of their property, including the parking lot adjacent to the playing fields, but now also a piece of property that is actually owned by them to allow us to reconfigure a little bit down at DBW and create a proper place for the food compost drop-off area. So, the folks at Henkles have been really, really great neighbors, as well as anchors of our village economy. And so, a shout-out to them for their very much appreciated cooperation. It's been a bunch of people that have taken no time at all to convince them of participating in these kinds of public benefits. So, thank you, Henkles. Glad to have you here and very much appreciate your support. Other announcements?
I have an announcement.
Go for it.
So, over the July 4th weekend, the Community Garden did their farmer's market sort of joint buy-in, I guess is the right way to put it. And they had a fantastic day on Saturday. They had a total of 711 pounds of fresh food donated between shoppers at the garden and the farmers themselves, 54 loaves of bread, jars of honey, peanut butter, all sorts of stuff. And the partnerships that the garden has developed with Hillside Food Outreach, A Home, Neighbors Link, and a new partner named Hudson Valley Community Services were all beneficiaries of what the Pleasantville Community Garden has put together in conjunction with the farmer's market. And that brings them over 65,000 pounds of fresh food donated to these various organizations since 2014. So, anybody who's doing the math at home, that's more than 32 tons of food. So, for a little idea that sparked in a young man's living room is pretty crazy.
And happily, it's turned into a very durable system because what we always feared would happen has actually happened, and that is, that young man, Devin Juros, has not remained permanently a middle-schooler, and he has had the temerity to grow up and graduate from high school. And so, he's headed off to college doing exactly what he knew he would do, which is find lots of other ways to make this a better world.
What a great program.
And so, he and, of course, the entire Juros family, as well as many other folks, are now...
And we all have lots of things we can do with our time, and there's a lot of volunteer causes that we all get confronted with. But I've been involved in the garden since it was formed, and there is really nothing quite like when you're the person bringing up fresh fruit and fresh vegetables to people who don't have it and need it, and you're the one handing them this stuff. There's a special thing there. So, if anybody's interested in getting involved in the garden, it's really, it's a very special thing to be part of.
Further, it's just a little nice piece of our Pleasantville story that, in a couple of modest pieces of land, I know that the Community Garden also farms the gardens at the high school and middle school in the summer. Some of these little parcels have been returned to productive agricultural use, which is a really nice story so far. No one has suggested dairy cows, but...
Not yet. So, if anybody's interested, that's P-VilleGarden.org.
All right. Thank you for that. Any further comments, questions? Comments from the public of any sort, or call in number 769-1677. All right, Resolution 170. Nicole.
All right. Whereas introductory local law four of 2019 was introduced to amend Chapter 185, Article 1, Section 3 concerning definitions to repeal Chapter 185, Article 7A, Section 35.1 concerning wireless telecommunications facilities and to adopt Chapter 185, Article 7A, Section 35.1 concerning wireless telecommunications facilities. And whereas the local law was referred to the Village Planning Commission and Westchester County Planning Board for comment back, and whereas a public hearing was held and closed on June 24th, 2019, and whereas the board has deemed this to be a type-two action under SECR, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville formally adopts introductory local law four of 2019, which shall become local law three of 2019 upon its passage, and the text of the law is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have comment from the required referrals, including the Westchester County Planning Department, but have a memo from our own planning commission asking a number of questions. What's the status of the answers to those?
Correct. So, Robert Hughes, I talked to Robert Hughes. We're going to be moving forward with getting those answers from the village attorney. We don't deem them to fully impact the local law as stated. We're also under the impression that there was a timeline that the federal government gave local governments to put regulations in place. We're a little past that timeline. However, it's a reasonable time period to get it on the books. So, we're going to move forward.
So, your advice is to pass this local law?
Correct. Get it on the books.
In the event that the answer, I mean, they're relatively modest questions, but legitimate questions for sure.
Yeah.
In the event that we would want to add some language, we'd go through this process again.
We would amend the local law.
But the logical belts and suspenders process of providing the safety is to pass it.
Correct.
I would agree with that. Any comment from you all? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 171. Steve.
Whereas introductory local law five of 2019 was introduced to repeal Article 7B, Section 35.1 concerning attendees, and whereas the Village Board has adopted a revised comprehensive wireless telecommunications facilities law that addresses applications for and impacts from all wireless telecommunications facilities in the Village of Pleasantville, and therefore it is appropriate to appeal...
Repeal.
Repeal.
Right.
Village Code Paragraph 185-35.1 in its entirety at this time end, whereas the local law was referred to the Village Planning Commission and the Westchester County Planning Department for comment back, and whereas a public hearing was held and closed on June 24th, 2019, and whereas the board has deemed this action to be a type-two action under SECR, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville formally adopts introductory local law five of 2019, which shall be local law four of 2019 upon its passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we're correct in modifying that text typo to repeal instead of appeal? That's acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
This falls into the same category as what we just described. A few questions have been raised by the planning commission, which will get resolved, and in the event that there should be any cause to adjust it, we can do so.
Correct.
But the advice would be to give us this protection right now. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Joe, 172.
Whereas in November of 2012, the Village of Pleasantville entered into a license agreement with Zwilling JA Henkles LLC for use of their property for parking, snow, storage, and to collect and store materials for recycling activities. And whereas the village intends to create a food composting drop-off area as detailed in Exhibit 2 here too, attached, and has worked with Zwilling JA Henkles LLC to develop an amendment to the revocable license agreement to allow for such use. And whereas the board has deemed it a type, I'm sorry, and whereas the board has deemed this action to be a type-two action under SECR, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes the village mayor to sign the first amendment to the revocable license agreement with Zwilling JA Henkles LLC to allow food compost drop-off area, and all the documents are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as reported earlier, Henkles has generously agreed to include this area in our license agreement to give us the chance to rearrange down at our DPW yard to create an appropriate spot for the drop-off area when we kick off this composting process in the fall. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Nicole, 173.
Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation has completed work to upgrade sidewalks on Route 141 Broadway in the Village of Pleasantville to bring them in compliance with ADA standards, and whereas the New York State Department of Transportation has notified the village that parking can no longer be allowed south of the marked parking stalls on Route 141 Broadway due to the increased size of the sidewalk. And whereas introductory local law six of 2019 was introduced to amend Chapter 173, Article 7, Section 60 and Section 66 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville to enact said restrictions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville shall hold a public hearing concerning introductory local law six of 2019 on July 22nd, 2019 at 8:00 PM at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to consider the proposed local law as attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as reported in the announcement of the public hearing, the New York State DOT has made some improvements to the sidewalks. That has necessitated some changes in the parking and the loss of a few parking spaces. And there's been some comment from neighbors there who we met with last week, trying to address the problems that have been created by this change configuration. So, it is not optional for us. We need to respond to what DOT has notified us we need to do, and which honestly seems like a logical thing to do. And so, those restrictions will be the subject of public hearing on the 22nd. If anybody is interested in commenting about that, you can pick up the details in our online agenda system at Pleasantville-NY.gov. Go to agendas and click into the item and you'll find the backup. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 174. Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate of $15 per hour for part-time laborer Joseph Foka, effective Saturday, July 20th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a note from the Superintendent Public Works regarding this, and he supports it.
Yes. Yeah, and you know, Joe will be taking on more work with the food composting program on the weekend, so we thought it was in everyone's best interest to raise him to $15 an hour.
Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 175. Joe.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the establishment of a perimeter for the Pleasantville Music Festival to include Hopper Street, Village Lane, Marble Avenue between Hopper Street and Village Lane, for the purpose of prohibiting unauthorized solicitation, peddling, and campaigning on Saturday, July 13th, 2019 between the hours of 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, it is just as described. We've had a few modest dust-ups in past years with folks creating pedestrian traffic problem with some of these activities as they try to capture the audience of folks coming to the music festival. And so, we propose to establish this zone that will keep those things from happening or give us the right to ask people to move outside the zone to continue those kinds of activities. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 176. Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the one-year term position of a village representative to the Community Development Advisory Group as required by the Community Development Block Grant Program administered by Westchester Urban County Consortium, and such appointment shall be designated each April at the village organizational meeting. And further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Brian Scarsdale to the position of Community Development Advisory Group Representative to assume the current term effective through April 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the Community Development Block Grant Program is back up and running in Westchester after having been on hiatus amid the argument between the county and the affordable housing settlement. It is back in operation, and we are going to make an application for some improvements to the Clinton Street Center. And in order to do that, we have to have a representative. Brian Scarsdale, former trustee, has volunteered to do that in addition to and complimentary to his role as president of the Pleasantville Housing Development Fund Corporation, which is the not-for-profit, which is now the owner of the building. So, thank you, Brian, for that volunteer. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 177.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on June 24th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes?
It wasn't here.
Then you can't correct them.
Can't comment them.
I saw nothing wrong. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Joe, 178.
Resolved the, I'm sorry, resolved the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2019 are hereby approved as listed below, effective May 31st, 2019, from the budget transfer to the general fund, $14,350, from administration part-time to transfer to capital Manville Road Improvement. And $44,997 revenue, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue from $2,504.80 from Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Conferences, $1,968.58 from Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Supplies, $4,280.12 from Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Supplies, $36,226.8 from Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community OS Expense. And lastly, $14,350 from inter-fund transfer from general fund to Manville Road Improvement Village Funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as those of you who watch regularly know, Pleasantville is the fortunate recipient of a five-year federal grant to fund our Pleasantville Strong Group. The village is the fiscal agent for that. But the monies that were just described are federal monies that we receive and then pay out to pay for the Pleasantville Strong services and expenses. The $14,350 transferred to capital reflects the advanced work going on.
No, that was work that was actually done in March and April of the previous fiscal year that we were just built for.
Right. Okay.
For the, you're talking about for the...
Value engineering of the civic space.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 179. Nicole.
Resolved that the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2020 are hereby approved as listed below, effective June 1st, 2019, an amount of $44,979.58. Again, Pleasantville Strong, and it breaks down in the amount of $2,504.80 for drug-free community conferences, $1,968.58 for drug-free community supplies, $4,280.12 for, again, supplies, $36,226.8 for, what is it, OS expense? Know what that is?
Outside service.
Okay. And that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, this amounts to transferring from one fiscal year to the next, or fiscal year changed over June 1?
But their fiscal year goes till September 30th.
Right. Just to make it, you know...
More complicated.
Oh, my God.
Just so the public is aware, all of the expenses are exactly the same that came out of one budget going into the next budget for Pleasantville Strong. And then the, I gotta look at it, how much on the prior one, the $14,350 came from general fund and went to...
Capital fund.
Capital fund. So, that was basically it.
Right. All right. All in favor?
I motion...
Do we have a second?
Oh, did we?
I thought I seconded.
I think he did.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 180.
Resolved that the check register dated July 8th, 2019, for fiscal year end 2019, covering check numbers 93973 to 93991, are hereby approved as listed below, from the general fund, the water fund, the capital fund, and the trust fund, a total of $147,623.74.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I challenge you administrators to do this every time. Only $13,099 being spent from the general fund. Yes, we could do that every check register. Huh?
Just need to shorten the fiscal year.
It's a lot.
You gonna make me highlight the next one?
Yeah, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, here we go. Now the bad news. 181, Joe. 181, Joe.
Resolved that check registers dated July 8, 2019 for fiscal year 2020, covering check numbers 93792 to 93972 are hereby approved as listed below from the general fund, $363,398.15, from the water fund, $56,000, I'm sorry, $56,049, and from the refuse fund, $103,230.53, for a total of $522,685.17.
Is there a second?
Second.
What a difference a year makes. You end one in May and start the next one. Comments or questions on the check register for FY 2020?
No.
All in favor? I motion approve. 182. Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Pleasantville Music Festival senior slash student ticket fee for a limit of two tickets per Pleasantville Volunteer, Fire Department, and Pleasantville Ambulance Corps members. And further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Pleasantville Musical Festival student senior ticket fee for five select services, human resources, staff members escorting guests to the festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
This piece for itself, we have sought to respond to some requests from local folks to assist them in being able to attend the music festival and are happy to approve this. All in favor?
Thanks, Fire and Peabody People for their service.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Reminder again, pleasantvilmusicfestival.com this coming Saturday, be there or B Square. Big help to get a ticket upfront. You can do so online or at the rec center. Is there any new business? Any comment on any subject from the public? Let me report that we began the evening earlier than we usually do with an executive session to discuss personnel matters, followed up with a discussion with a resident and with our superintendent of park and recreation. We're going to continue in work session with an update on our discussions with the New York State DOT regarding design approval status for our Manville Road and financing plan and the civic space project, and then return to Matt Trainer to continue our discussion about policies for use of Village Act facilities, as well as discussion about the pool. And then we'll return to executive session for legal matters. So is there a motion to go into executive session, and we'll hold that in abeyance to complete our other work session items?
No.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Good evening. Thank you. Hope to see you this Saturday at the music festival. Otherwise, we're back in two weeks on Monday, July 22. Thank you all.